Good evening. I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for our work session. And I'll start by asking councilors if you have any comments about the agenda and items on consent. Okay, any councilor concerns? We'll start with our pre-council work session with Ms. Rybold and Mr. Pauley regarding Housing Our Future.
All right, good evening Mayor Fitzgerald and city councilors. Give me a moment here and I will pull up my presentation for this evening. All right, I am Kim Rybold, Senior Planner, as I mentioned. With me tonight is Daniel Pauley, the city's planning manager. And we wanted to provide you with an update on the Housing Our Future project. We had a work session with you in early March and we had an interesting conversation there around really looking at this last phase of the project and outreach that will help inform the project. So we wanted to take an opportunity to come back to you and dive a little bit more into information that we've already uncovered from other recent housing planning efforts we've had. And just, you know, come to a shared understanding of how a lot of what we've heard already is going to help inform this project. I do want to take a few minutes tonight to talk a little more about the housing production strategy component of the project, since that really will be one of the key outputs we have. And that is really the key part where you all will help inform how we move forward in our next phase of planning for housing in the city. So I want to make sure you, we have a good understanding of the types of actions we can look at as a part of that strategy, what it can achieve, what our expectations are there. And based on that, we then want to discuss some other outreach options to make sure that you all as decision makers have the tools you feel that you need to inform your upcoming work on reviewing and developing this housing production strategy. So I do want to revisit at a high level this statistic about cost burden. I know it's one that's come up in a couple of our meetings. It's one that I think people can relate to a lot because it's something that a lot of people are experiencing in terms of the impacts of how the cost of housing, in particular, whether that be rent or mortgage, utilities, everything associated with that relative to income. And so, as a reminder, a household is considered to be cost burdened if they're spending more than 30% of their gross income on these housing-related costs. And then severely cost burdened is the category of spending half or more of gross income on housing cost. And so, we previously shared some statistics on Wilsonville. The statistics I have up here are updated based on the most recent data. So a little over half of our renters are cost burdened, with about 28% of those severely cost burdened. And 23% of homeowners are considered cost burdened, with about 10% of homeowners severely cost burdened. And while these numbers have been going up, they're not too far off from what we're seeing on a nationwide level, which, you know, is really indicative of the nature of housing costs and housing cost increase and how what's happening here isn't particularly unique. But we know that it's having an impact and it's having an impact on how people live and how people are able to go about their daily lives. So just wanted to put that in context. This is one piece of data that informs this project. It's not the only one. We will be having another work session scheduled here in July to talk about some more of the technical work that is coming out of this project. And so, we will learn at that meeting a little more about some of the other numerical inputs that will help inform this work. But just wanted to revisit this. Next, we wanted to add a little more context on what we've heard on the topic of housing. We've been talking about housing a lot, I feel like, probably the last five years between Mr. Pauley and myself, in one project or another, we've been talking about housing. So this really ranges from the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan that we adopted in 2020 and some further work that we did, whether or not that's the middle housing work, as well as the Frog Pond East and South master planning. So we did include some of those outreach summaries from those projects within your package, just so you had them as a point of reference. This slide really highlights some of the key high-level themes that have come out that we've heard that we know apply to those projects five years ago, three years ago. They still apply now. And so, these things, while they have been noted in other work, they are also an important starting point for the work that we will be doing in putting together our housing production strategy. I think of note, as it relates to the last side slide, the pieces about uncertain housing costs being stressful, the importance of housing security and cost burden, those things really all interplay together. So I think those are some important things to keep in mind as we move forward. Now, let's talk a little more about the housing production strategy itself. I titled this slide Creating a Housing Toolbox. So in some ways, this is a bit familiar to the, or similar to the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, where that was really our city's first effort at starting to explore some very housing-specific strategies and what we can do to have an impact on making Wilsonville an inclusive place when it comes to housing. One of the things that's important to keep in mind here as we look at strategies for housing going forward is that there's only a small amount that local governments can do, or places where local governments can have influence. A lot of our housing is produced by the private market historically and currently. And so, a lot of the aspects that we see about housing costs are really things that are not within a local government's control. But what the state wants us to do as we start looking at housing production strategies is really, you know, having cities look at the places where we can have an influence. And to think about and prioritize, you know, what are the needs we've seen, both in the data and from what we've heard in the community? And what are those different tools that we can employ to really address some of these issues that we're aware of? And so, you know, this group of boxes that's on the screen, these are kind of high-level categories of where these strategies fall, where local governments may have influence. Some of these areas, like land use regulations, Mr. Pauley could talk to you for probably an hour-plus on how he has worked to implement different land use regulations to get at some of our housing needs. But there's a lot of other ideas that are in here. Many of the actions that were in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan do fall into these buckets. But really what we're going to be doing as we work on housing production strategy is looking at the actions we've already taken, which we've taken many, assessing those, looking at what we said we might consider exploring but haven't done yet, and thinking about whether or not those are things we want to, you know, set as goals for the city in the future. And think about other strategies that maybe we haven't considered yet as a way to address the city's housing needs. And, you know, ultimately, what will come out of this project with is a list of things, not too dissimilar from, you know, the types of things we considered in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, but things that this council can commit to starting, taking action on within the next six years. This is a process that will repeat itself. We will go through this process as a city again. In six years, we will be checking in and reporting on our progress in three years. And so, we want to be sure that the strategies that we consider as part of this process are ones that we're going to commit to, that we really think can best target the housing needs that we are aware of in Wilsonville, both now and ones that we see in the future. Yes?
Yeah. So, somebody asked me the other day, how many, because Wilsonville has built a bunch of houses, even though, you know, there's, things aren't affordable still and we're working on it. How many units do you think we built in the last five years?
Total residential units? Do you have a good number off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, but we can certainly get that to you. We have that in our annual housing report.
Yeah.
Which we're about to publish here. But we have past years as well. So I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'd probably get it wrong if I tried to guess.
Yeah.
I dug around a little bit and I don't know if I had the right information, but it looked like maybe in the last three years, we built maybe more than 250 units. Does that sound right?
That sounds right. A lot of the units that have been built in the past few years would be units out in Frog Pond West. That would be, and some of Clermont in Villebois. So I think that's...
I would love to find out. I mean, I don't want to make extra work for you, but I think it'd be interesting to know. Thank you.
Yep. And I do anticipate, as we typically do with our annual housing report, that that is an informational presentation that does come before our city council. And so, I think we can talk about when that's going to happen because that will be a good piece of information for you to have as we ramp up this particular project as well.
So can I ask a question to you before you leave that slide? I know that one of the, I know that this probably falls in the bucket of the second, the second box on the top row, but it's not really quite the same. And that is funding for infrastructure, which may be, I mean, I think that's kind of the work that the mayor and some of the other folks have been doing, Mr. Ottenhead, and because an emphasis on funding for infrastructure might contribute to all of these in some way or another. And I wonder if it wouldn't be valuable to put it out there as a separate item.
So this is actually, this list comes from a master document that our consultant team has prepared for us. That's really a first cut of a lot of different strategies. I can tell you that within the funding sources to support residential development, there are actually some tools that get at infrastructure, or ways to help fund that as a component of residential development. So that would be a valid. Looking at those strategies and seeing, you know, what efforts we might want to take around infrastructure funding certainly would be a valid type of strategy to consider within this process.
I think that's a good point because I hear that from other cities too. It's what's holding, holding even the home building community back because the entry price could be too high for them to be able to want to try it. And then, whereas the state wants the cities to do this, but the cities don't necessarily have the streets, sidewalks, and sewer and water ready. And there's, we haven't found the magic wand.
Yeah, and we, I think we missed out on a funding opportunity in the last, not out of, I think, any omission from the city, but I think we missed out on some infrastructure money coming from the state.
Well, they dedicated it elsewhere.
It was dedicated elsewhere, yes, excuse me. But I think that we had prepared, I think, some documents to be submitted. And so, I think keeping those opportunities in our forefront are probably really important.
Well, I think the League of Oregon Cities and Metropolitan Mayors Association all went after that in a big way. And it wasn't, we didn't get what we wanted.
All right. Well, quickly, I just want to touch on the community input activities that are currently scoped as part of this project. Information on these activities is included in one of the attachments that was in your packet. And so, this ranges from doing some one-on-one interviews to, you know, try to hear from a variety of perspectives around housing need in particular. It looks to hold one culturally specific community event, whether that be a standalone event, or going to an already established event, or creating a focus group. We're still working through that with our project team. There will also be an open house as we get closer into the strategy development part of this project, to really be able to present some different ideas on strategies. We will have a project task force that is beginning to, you know, work towards discussing strategies and providing input to the Planning Commission and City Council. That process will start next month. And then, there will be work sessions throughout the project before both the Planning Commission and City Council.
And if I could just make a comment about that, and is that all right, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Some of the issues that we've heard, I think, about some of the town center plan and the numbers of units or whatever that are proposed for the town center plan really point out that that planning has been going on for many, many years and that there have been multiple points at which, and opportunities for which our citizens can have input into that. And some chose not to do that. And so, this is another opportunity, I think, when we talk about housing needs and the kind of housing, and we're looking down into the future, that those citizens who have opinions and concerns about the types of housing that we have in the city really need to participate in these activities in a large way.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. So what you're saying is, kind of recapping that, in, we have multi-year processes and publicize it in the newspaper, in the Boones Ferry Messenger, now in electronic communications. We're starting to do that more in Spanish. But that's at the beginning. And invite people to attend open houses, speak with people, fill out surveys, various things. And it really is important. And, and there have been, we, I just had another meeting to go over that. There have been really good conversations at those meetings where people express different opinions and have conversations about them. And that's how we ended up with, in the town center plan, 1,600 some potential households over the next 20 years. It's through those processes. And so, now, we're looking at continuing to do that. At the, in this, in this case, it is a requirement of the state, right? And we are continuing to look for more ways to get in. And we are continuing to look for more ways to get input, and it can also even be sending an email. All right, thank you.
All right. So a couple ideas that extend beyond that initial scope that we had. The first one being, after our last work session, we worked with our communication staff to put together a housing story prompt, just asking a simple question for people to share their stories with us. And so, that has been available on Let's Talk Wilsonville for a couple months now. Participants who provided a story by last week have been entered into an opportunity to get a $50 gift card to retailer of their choice. And so, what was interesting about this is we actually got more feedback from renters, which was great because I feel like oftentimes, we do these, use these online tools and we hear proportionally more from homeowners in the community. But really, I think this, again, reflects some of that data about the large proportion of renters that are impacted by cost burden. So a lot of the feedback we heard was related to increases in rent, increasing fees, whether or not it's utility fees, HOA fees for property owners. But what that results in is less ability to save, not only for things like, you know, a down payment for a home, to get into a home buyer opportunity, but also things like vacations or just savings for healthcare. And so, you know, I don't know that any of that is surprising, but those are the experiences that renters have shared in this community. The other piece we offered was, if people were interested, to let us know if they want to do an interview with our product team. And so, I think from this pool of respondents, we probably will draw two to three people to participate in those interviews that we have scoped.
So did you, I think I heard you say, the housing story prompt opportunity's been closed now, is that right? It was up for a pretty long time?
I think the prompt itself is still open. It's just, you know, because as far as I'm concerned, if somebody wants to share their story, we want to hear it. But the incentive to participate and possibility to get a gift card, that closed last week. So I do think that, you know, while we're still in this information gathering part of the project, we'll probably leave that open because, you know, I think we can hear a story and still find it informative.
And you said that's on the website?
Yes, letstalkwilsonville.com on the Housing Our Future page.
Thank you.
So what we wanted to talk with you tonight about was, you know, understanding now what we've heard so far, what we are going to hear through script outreach activities. Are there any additional types of outreach for this project that can fit within the deadlines of this project and inform it and really kind of help shape that scope? Is there anything else this council is interested in so that you are informed as you start talking strategies and making policies for the future? So there was the attachment of possible ideas. It was really, you know, certainly, we don't have the capacity to do all those ideas, but we wanted to share the scope of different options there might be. We'll highlight that as we looked at these different ideas, our staff team really thought there were a couple of good picks on here, that if this council did want to do more than what was scoped, this is where we thought there could be the most bang for your buck in terms of things that we might already be doing or things that really might empower the community in different ways than we've tried before. So the first of these is the cost burden meeting, which we had to hold for the first time last year, and that we did as part of the project. It was last November. And we were trying to think, are there any ways to make this a little more interesting and accessible to the community while still meeting the statutory requirements of the public meeting? A few of our staff had a meeting with Wilsonville Community Sharing a few months ago, and they were talking about ideas they had for ways to publicize a lot of their services more. I know it's something they're really interested in, and so it got, got me to thinking of, well, if we had maybe a partnership with our local service providers that could talk about services they offer and how that might help people who are struggling with cost burden, that that might be a way to try to draw more people in, have more conversations, learn more things. And so we think really putting a little more, you know, thinking about more creative partnerships with the 2024 Cost Burden Meeting that we'll have to hold, we think is a good way to, you know, educate people based on where we're at in this process, on what we're looking at, and potentially get feedback, as well as just, you know, providing an opportunity for a community partner to share information with the public. The second pick we have is the Housing Conversation Guide. This is one that we actually had in our public engagement plan, but it was not included as part of the DLCD funded scope. But really, this conversation guide would be something that we would put together, and it would essentially be, you know, kind of a how-to host a housing conversation that, you know, participants in the community could have with other members of the community. And so, something that's not necessarily a centralized, come to City Hall and provide your feedback type of opportunity, but a way for groups, you know, people who work together, people who maybe their kids go to school together, people who have, who participate in other organizations to really organize a conversation amongst themselves, amongst people they know, maybe amongst people of differing perspectives, to really learn from each other and to better understand how, what housing needs people have or how housing costs might affect people, and then provide that information back to us as a data point in this project. And so there's some information in the attachment about those. Happy to answer more questions if you have them. There are other options. There might be ideas you have that we didn't think of in that attachment that we can talk about as well. Really, the important thing to keep in mind is that if we are going to do additional outreach for this project, we need to be able to accommodate it in the project timeline. And we want to be sure that if we're asking the community for input, that we can be able to demonstrate how it's having a direct and actionable impact on the end product. So, you know, we don't want to have an outreach opportunity just to say we did. We want to learn something from it and be able to use it to inform our work.
So can I ask you a question before you move on there? One of the things that we do on a regular basis is we send utility bills from the city of Wilsonville to every resident. And is it possible that, I don't know how many residents are actually doing their payments now electronically, online, or actually send in a payment or drop a payment off? But it seems to me that that is a good way, every single resident, and it could be publicized in the Boones Ferry Messenger that it's coming and it will be in their, in their bill. And it could be a small enough response card that it would fit in the envelope, fit in a return envelope, or something that they could just staple and return, throw in the mail and return it. But that way, you are guaranteed then that everyone has been notified. They may not read it, they may not respond, but my guess is that with maybe three or four very succinct questions, that we may get people responding. And maybe in numbers that may be significant enough that we could say, this is the project, this is how many people, this is how many we sent out, this is how many responded, this was the result of those, and this is how it informed the plan. So.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'll pivot here to my next slide, which is, if there's any additional information you feel like you need as we work on this project, articulating what that is, because that might generate ideas as well. And then, thinking about that information that you feel like you need, which of these outreach ideas have a good opportunity to provide you with that information? Maybe you feel like what we have here in the scope is going to give you enough information. I think we're just seeking feedback to make sure that you have the information you need to make informed decisions as we develop the housing production strategy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the information, the presentation. And then, can we go back to the previous slide? Perfect. So a couple of questions about those two bullets. So for the 2024 Cost Burden Meeting, you mentioned perhaps partnering with Wilsonville Community Sharing or something like this. But also still needing to meet the requirements of the public meeting, which I'm assuming means that we need to be recorded, minutes, televised.
Agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, things like that. So I think we would have to think creatively about how we can, you know, maybe it's something where there's a meeting, but then before the meeting, it's not actually part of the meeting where, you know, you have a conversation part of it, and maybe there's an informational piece that, you know, you're still meeting the requirements. I think we'd have to think through that a bit. I mean, honestly, we struggled with that a little bit last year, how to make it interesting but meet statute, so.
Well, I wondered, do we have the capability to meet those requirements if we do it off site of City Hall, or are we really kind of tethered to City Hall? Because, you know, I thought if we're partnering with Wilsonville, can we go to Wilsonville Community Sharing? Like, can we go to a different space that is perhaps frequented by individuals that we'd really like to help engage in the conversation and make it convenient for everyone, right?
Yes, yes. So that's a good question. I think we will need to do more research. I don't know that Oregon Public Meetings law, you know, says you have to meet behind a dais for it to be a public meeting. We have other public meetings and other venues. I think we just, we would need to be mindful in picking a venue to be sure that we are meeting our obligation, or that we can do so in a, you know, creative way to still, you know, hold the meeting and also find a way to make it something that people want to attend.
Yeah. One thought with the Housing Conversation Guide concept, I wondered if that is something, so if I'm understanding it correctly, it's like this little, here's how you do it, kind of informational, instructional, here's how you might host your own conversation and be able to channel that information gained back to the project team. So I'm also curious, could we share that guide and encourage some of our major employers in the city to do that? Because of course, housing is critically important for our economic development as well. And so it seems like perhaps partners with some of our larger employers would be a good thing in that area. And then the other item on the list in our packet, that's not on the screen, but that I was curious about, was the Housing Policy 101 City Website. I was wondering what exactly that website, information would that website hold? I understand it doesn't really sound like it's an engaging kind of a thing, but maybe it's a foundational, like informational foundational piece. So what information would that website hold that isn't available somewhere else on either the project website or somewhere else on the city's website? Which made me wonder, what exactly do we have on the project website and the city's website that helps inform the community broadly about what the housing needs are in the city, or the housing situation, or trends that we're seeing happening, or the problems that we're trying to find solutions for? It seems like if we all got to get rowing in the similar direction, including community members, including developers that come to our city, including everyone, it would be helpful for us to all have a similar access point of information.
Yeah, good question. So I think there's a lot of, because I started, I went down a hole and I started digging one day, just to see what other easily digestible resources that existed. Because there were some comments at our last work session about, you know, this is a topic that not a lot of people understand. So I started wondering, you know, what resources are out there? I know I've read a couple of books that describe housing policy well, but, you know, not everybody searches that in their spare time. But there are some resources out there that put it a little more into plain English that I think, you know, part of that is aggregating that information, certainly not reproducing it where it already exists. But a lot of the, you know, the data that, or the work that comes out of our reports that we pull together for like the housing needs analysis tends to be kind of in that static PDF format that gets linked off a city webpage. We do, when we do our housing report, we do it using this tool called Story Map. And so when you've had the presentation and it kind of slides through and it has pictures and information, that is a little more engaging for people. And so our annual housing report is in that format. But we have yet to, you know, try putting products of this kind of technical work into a Story Map format. But, you know, I don't think, there's a lot of information there, so to cut it and paste it into a webpage, you know, is tricky for people to navigate. But, so I think Housing 101, yeah, it was a little more informational resource, but there is kind of the project page as well, and thinking about how we're highlighting information that can go with that.
If it's, you know, supposed to be easily engaging and community-facing, which it sounds like, and I would imagine that's what we're after, I wonder if something like creating some infographics would be helpful in like a quick snapshot that...
Better glance.
Yeah, and we could even have like it blown up, big poster size, not on a website, but, you know, at the entry to the library and things like that, where it would get more attention and just kind of bring the entire community together in a more grounded conversation, I guess.
Something that might go along with that is, we've talked about going to where people are. So there are some HOA groups that meet, maybe not always in Zoom, but, you know, maybe this could be distributed in ways like that. There are some employer groups, the Chamber of Commerce, we could maybe find different venues to share that periodically so that there's more awareness of the status of our housing.
Even PTAs, like the parents at the schools.
And maybe there's a, there's a period of a blitz of that information, so it's not always there, but...
Yeah, kind of branded.
I did want to know, I have a question. Am I interrupting? Okay. So I was also thinking about the employers as just one set of groups, and I wanted, maybe we need to research this, but with regard to the, you know, we need to make sure that we're attending to all the public meetings laws. But could you do something where an employer or a group, it could be a PTA, some group that is convening, they are given this conversation guide and are talking about it and just kind of learning about the, and it comes with a survey. So maybe they're just given the conversation guide and are asked to then take the survey. And maybe the, there's a, there's a uniform way that you do it so they know how to stay within the public meeting laws. You know what I'm saying? There are parameters to how to lead the public meeting and take the minutes and everything, and maybe record them, audio record them, but you kind of keep it simple. And then the, the end result is you had a preliminary conversation to frame it, but then each person goes on their own to fill out their survey.
And I do want to clarify that the public meeting requirement specifically relates to the cost burden meeting. So the conversation guide is not, I mean, this is just another way for us to gather input.
Okay. So where are we with this?
So, time is a little bit of the essence here because if, beyond what we already have scoped, if we want to include anything else where we're at that point in the project that we need to, you know, put plans in place to make that happen. So I definitely think, you know, the cost burden meeting is going to happen. I think if this council is interested in us trying to broaden that a little more, that that's something, you know, we can look into and think about when we're hosting that and where.
Well, I'm interested, let's just thumbs up if people are interested in exploring the Housing Conversation Guide.
I think that's a really nice idea. And I, and just what we were saying earlier, just to make sure that we're outreach and hearing lots of voices, because that's what democracy is all about, is hearing everybody's voice. because that's what democracy is all about, is hearing everybody's voice.
Anything else? So you're going to come back to us with?
So our next check-in with you all is actually a joint work session with Planning Commission.
Okay.
And you, I think by, so that's in mid-July. So I think that does give us some time. We might not have it fully done because we will have to talk to our consultants about, you know, setting up additional contract for that work. That being said, I think if this council is interested in that tool, we can talk to you at that point about how to go about implementing that because we will, you know, if you're able and willing to reach out to people you know. I mean, certainly staff has connections, particularly through our Economic Development Manager, to, you know, reach out to employers, but you all are really embedded in the community. And so I think our project team would look to you to help, help get this out there and, you know, find us good contacts of who might be an interested and willing participant to host conversations. The more people that we can kind of have rally around this conversation guide will make it more of a success as a tool.
What the, the cost burden meeting, which is an obligation, which we have to do, was, it was a Zoom meeting last time. If we could do a combination of both of those opportunities for people to do Zoom and a, an in-person, I think that would be helpful. And I, I've been to a number of those meetings. I think, I think we need to be sensitive to the population that we're trying to reach because electronic resources are not necessarily available to everyone and the technology and the ability to use the technology is not on a level playing field. So I think we have to figure out ways that we can see the broader picture. And while I think Wilsonville Community Sharing is a good option, you're going to get a very limited clientele in that, in that group. And so if we are, if the focus is really, are we trying to talk to those citizens who are burdened? If that is the client group, then the strategies need to be really thought about in terms of what kind of resources do they have? What do they participate in? If it is a broader kind of conversation with citizens across the community, then that's a different story. So I don't know specifically what the target population is. You folks know that better than than we do, so.
Yeah, it's more tied to, there are specific entities we have to reach out to that are either representative of people experiencing cost burden, organizations working with communities experiencing cost burden or people. So, so not to say, I mean, a public meeting is a public meeting, but it really, the target is talking about the causes and consequences of cost burden. So I think, you know, if we have an opportunity to get more people engaged in that conversation and talk about, you know, solutions, which is part of what we're supposed to be doing with that meeting, I think offering something tangible might be a way to entice more people to participate.
And, and I think there are resources in the community and our citizens that might be able to inform that discussion really well. They may not be part of the cost burden population because if the cost burden population knew the answers to how to get out of that, they would be out. So we may have, I mean, we may need to look at, I mean, again, I don't know what the parameters are, you know, and the guidelines in that. So, so, I mean, as you look at it, I think it's probably good to think about both of those populations.
Yeah.
Just to kind of take along what councillor was just saying, that there could be some shame, you know, if people can't afford their housing or purchasing their food and stuff. And they might not want to feel, they might not feel comfortable coming to a public hearing, that it might be more sensitive to, you know, do outreach by telephone calls or, you know, maybe knocking on doors or, or something. I don't know. That's just something to think about.
Is that helpful?
Yes. Any, if there's any other input, I'll take that. Otherwise, we will reconvene again in July.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to Frog Pond East and South Implementation Development Code with Mr. Polly and Miranda.
Is this on? Sorry, it's roundabout. So just right before Mr. Polly starts, I thought I would come up, if I may. Mayor and councillors, my name is Miranda Bateshall, Planning Director with the city. And I wanted to address councillor Barry's question about housing production over the past five years. I was able to look back at the prior housing reports and give you a total of 501 dwelling units have been, CFOs have been permitted over the past five years. We are, as Mr. Polly mentioned, just now finishing up the 2023 housing report that will be going to the Planning Commission at their next meeting. If council would like a report on that, we always include it in your, like, updates. We can do that in hard copy and you can peruse it online. But if you'd like a presentation, you can also pass that information along to us and we can bring it to a work session.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bateshall.
Dan, as you're getting ready to do this, is this a different format than we've seen before? It looks very different. Is it, is it a revised way that we're dealing? Or is it just to make it so that we can see different pieces?
It's a large document, so it's a way that was devised to make it more navigable, both for you and for, for the public.
Okay. Just added indexing and so forth. Good.
Because when you combine, when you combine this, we're just talking about one of the, the main section, which is the Frog Pond code tonight. But when you combine that with the other code sections, you're looking at over 80 pages. So. So that's, here we are again. We are, we are nearing the end of this project. I won't be here on these work sessions forevermore, I promise. We are getting near the end. So what we want to focus on tonight about Frog Pond East and South and the implementation of this plan is reviewing these code amendments specifically in the section of the code called the Residential Neighborhood Zone, which is the zone that is for Frog Pond. And prior, a couple of work sessions ago, we went through some proposed code amendments to apply citywide and we've taken your input on those. That was a great conversation. And last work session, we really got into this big picture of housing variety. And really, this is a plan about housing and housing variety. That's what, that's what's the center of this plan. That is what it's organized around, is providing a variety of housing choices. Including, in the, I want to emphasize, in the, in the master planning effort, a key component was an affordable housing analysis. And that still is, has been throughout this, a key driver of, you know, not every housing unit out here will be affordable, but there will be options. And kind of two things. First of all, for market rate housing, there's a number of options that will be more attainable on the market rate than what may have been built most recently. But also, part of the idea is removing any regulatory barriers to, if a partnership comes up, when a partnership comes up, to, to build affordable housing. So with that, let's dive right into this, into the code amendments review. And I'll actually go out of PowerPoint and actually go to that document that councillor Lindville went on, talked, referenced at the beginning. But before I do that, just want to give kind of big picture, kind of focus. This is kind of the nucleus of this whole text, pages and pages of texts and diagrams that you have before you is implementing housing variety from the master plan. And key components of this is to establish the geographies at which we're reviewing housing variety. Because a big component of the master plan is we didn't want to segregate it as much. That we wanted that variety throughout in each area. And then from there, we set the minimums by each of these geographies. Each of geographies is assigned essentially performance measures of how many total numbers of units. And also a minimum number of what we call target units, which were in the master plan, types of units that we want to make sure. We talked about this last work session. That includes middle housing, small units, and mobility-ready units. We also, key components is a maximum amount of any single unit in any development. That gets to, you know, you're not going to have more than about half of any one housing type in a development. There's, there's also a requirement that in each development, this is scalable on size, you have to have typically two or three different unit types in your development. So that's all of these different things really getting into this variety that's, that's central to what the vision was for Frog Pond East and South. And then a lot of, the rest of the code essentially, and this supports that, particularly design standards that are recommended are tailored to support this, this vision and not to work in concert with it, not get in the way of it. That's where there's things like our housing, our lot size is based on your unit and putting the setbacks around the unit. So you don't have a separate standard that's getting away of this housing variety that we're trying to implement. So with that, I'm going to exit out of the PowerPoint. I'll bring up the actual PDF, which I've bookmarked and I can get to different areas. What I would suggest is if there's specific standards that as you review the packet, that you want to bring up and talk about it, talk about or specific questions and comments, we can start with that. But I'm prepped to kind of give more of a, I can go and give some summaries of some of the key things as well as we look at this. So give me a moment to bring this up. All right, so I have this document up. So I'm happy to jump anywhere. Is there anywhere particularly that council wanted to discuss or have questions about from the get-go?
And we're in work sessions, so just take the mic.
I'll start us off. Just to confirm, this is page 80 of our packet. It is, okay, impacted code sections 4.127.02. It's the part where it's describing different uses for that commercial Main Street.
Okay.
And point seven was community services and community centers. Would that include any nonprofit organizations under the umbrella of community services? Because I know it's like we had retail and office and stuff, but nonprofit could also be in there.
And since this was really published for this purposes, we've received additional feedback from Planning Commission and others that we're going to rework this to be more mirror better, like Town Center or the Villawatt Village Center, this more inclusive. Feedback we've gotten is that this list here is fairly narrow, fairly limited. To open that up to, you know, recreational uses, some other things that may fit into these tenant spaces, not, make sure we're not limiting that. So that is one revision that we're working on.
Super, yeah.
Would, I would think a nonprofit or a non, you know, community services such as that would be included.
Okay, yeah. Because we may or may not be able to anticipate the directions that, you know, interests and needs drive us, so, thank you. I guess I'll go ahead for next question. Page 95, this is of our packet, this is 4.1, 4.127.06E. Unit type variety for East and South neighborhood. Look at that. You're right there. Okay, so two acres or less, we kind of have like this bullet thing. If we scroll down, there's two, more than two acres, you have to have two unit types, more than five acres, you have to have three unit types, right? So does this create a dynamic that, like, as different sections of land are picked up and they pick the different unit types? Does this mean that the last person to the table has the smallest menu of options?
No, all of the standards, this, because, I mean, we, we have experience with that, that there's been some standards in Villawatt and others that, you know, don't always necessarily align with ownership. And we were always mindful, I mean, that experience and just in general, we're mindful that, of how this is actually going to develop. I mean, development tends to occur based on existing lots, right? The developer gets an option to purchase a certain piece of property and that's the confines, that's the scope of their development. So all of these are really written with that in mind, be it a large area where they've consolidated a bunch of lots or it's a single, you know, three to five acre lot. They come in and the standards are applied to that piece of property. And I've been allotted and planned for that piece of property to develop independently and not, so you're not like last guy and last person in line is left with like this. That's why some of this, it does get kind of long, but that is to provide for that, like the Table 6B where you have all those numbers for each tax lot. That's so it's clear regardless of how, how those properties are consolidated or developed independently, so.
And this will also then make it so we don't have one particular housing type that occurs at the beginning of development and then another particular housing type that happens at the end of the development.
Right. It's mixed throughout.
Yeah, yeah, of the, the growth and the life of the, of the project. Okay, thank you. I think that's good, by the way, to have, to have that blend over time occurring. Yeah.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that was an important component that kind of was expressed in the implementation language in the master plan.
Okay, I had a question or just wanted to talk a little bit on page 92 in the packet or page 15 of 55, which is about the, clarifying the minimum standards of multiple tax lots that can be combined together as long as they are within the same sub-district. I just wonder if you can give us that, kind of illustrate that scenario a little bit, please.
Sure. So particularly, so as, kind of backing up a little bit, as we, as we wrote this code and looked at this implementation, we're dealing with kind of two scenarios that we both have, that the city has good experience with. Like you, you talk about like a Villawatt scenario where a vast majority of the land was one large owner, right? So you had to, or, you know, versus Frog Pond West, where majority of the land is, you know, two to five acres, where you have a lot of this partialization. In East and South, we have both those scenarios, right? And particularly in Frog Pond East, you have large ownerships of like 70 some odd acres versus, and South, most of South is that two to five acre sized lots. So it's very parceled. So, so this language is really geared towards that partialization that really exists in Frog Pond South. So a sub-district, which is about, you know, 20 acres, has quite a few lots in it. And what we'd anticipate, and it's typical. And what we'd anticipate, and it typically happens, is a developer will come in and they will consolidate, if they can, two or three of those lots together. Some of those lots end up being pretty small, or like an acre. So when you run the math on the table, you end up, you know, 20% of one is a fairly small number. Or let's say it's a size of a unit that's, would only, as a percentage, if you're just developing that one little parcel, you really, you're not going, you're only going to be able to develop like one unit type. It's just, that's the practicality of it. But realizing if that ends up getting consolidated with a couple of five acre lots next to it, that would count as a proportionate amount of that larger development site. And so at that point, the requirement that would be for that little parcel would be mixed in with these larger parcels. So it's really trying to provide for this flexibility of how it's applied based on how much land you're dealing with. And we had to be really thoughtful about that because we know we're going to be dealing with both situations in Frog Pond East and South.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because I don't think I've heard this come up before. I like the idea of flexibility. But I think traditionally developers do just the, you know, house, 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 and just kind of really standard cookie cutter stuff because banks like that. Have we had any input from people who finance?
We've definitely had input from developers that get the financing. And we understand that concept, right? There's definitely economies of scale. It's not only financing, but there's, I mean, to design each unit type is quite a, quite a expense to design a new unit type, to do all the engineering and architectural work to get to that design. So that was something that was put into this. You know, something that's called for in the master plan is a block level variety. At some point, you know, we wanted to make sure that there was, at one iteration, we were looking at, okay, you know, requiring like every other house or, you know, you could need to have, at every block face, need to have at least two unit types, right? We talked to the development community and really came back to a balance where you could develop a whole block for efficiency and land and site planning purposes as one unit type, as long as, you know, the next block over has a different unit type. And as we looked at that and kind of striking a balance, we believe we found this balance where you're able to have these efficiencies. Maybe more types of development than some developers want, but still should be able to be financed and a reasonable balance of these kind of competing, of really wanting this finite variety, but also recognizing the economies of scale that are related to both financing as well as design costs.
So would you say it's kind of similar to like a planned unit development, but a little more flexibility with housing types added on?
Yeah. I mean, we've talked about this, we talked about this last work session, where in a lot of ways, the outcome's similar to Villawatt, which was a very detailed, almost block by block level planned development. It's like we're putting this unit type on this block. It's going to look like this, right? And this is more, I guess you'd call it performance method with some flexibility where, yes, we need to get to that point, but there's that flexibility within it to choose a unit type within a certain category, as well as choose where you're going to put it in the development, as long as it meets the citing and design standards.
I can hardly wait to see the finishing touch. I think that it sounds like a really good plan.
Thank you.
Can you clarify for me the quadplex concept and where it's allowed, where it's not allowed? And is it specified only for middle housing? Or can it be townhouse as well? And are there limitations on? I think it can't be on a corner, is that correct?
So there may be some, so elsewhere in the city, there's a lot more limitations on quadplex. So quadplex essentially, you know, duplex is two units, triplex is three units, quadplex is four units. And I think it's important to understand in terms of your question of the relationship to townhouses, that they come in different configurations. I mention this because a quadplex configured like a townhouse is very, very similar, I mean, almost the same, I mean, for all intents and purposes, the same as a townhouse. You can even maybe do a middle housing land division and it's settled separately and is very, very, very close to a townhouse because they're on their own side by side. But you can also get, you know, a stacked quadplex or another configuration that is, you know, for, you know, maybe two ground floor units, two upstairs units in a single building and that would be a quadplex as well. So quadplex is just a term that refers to four units on a single lot.
And there's no, there's no limitations about where those might occur?
No.
No.
So they are, it's really, as on all these housing types, there are like, there are certain design standards that kind of direct one way or the other, right? There's a minimum, there's a maximum building width in the different urban form types and setbacks and height things that guide the form. But once you, and that's kind of how this is built, is in that sense, the idea is the form and the maximum kind of box that a structure can be. But once you get to that structure and define the size of that structure, we're giving a lot of flexibility to how the units and how many units are configured in that structure.
So, and I can't remember exactly which page this is on, but it talks about the ability for middle housing to exceed, what does it say? To exceed the numbers of middle housing. And would then that decrease the numbers of other forms?
So let me refer to that particularly. And really, that's a statutory compliance type footnote. We don't anticipate, we anticipate and that, and just how development works, most of the time developers are going to know what they're going to do when they come in, right? But for, but really what House Bill 2001, what the legislation says is you can't designate a parcel to be a detached home and then say that's forever a detached home and not allow middle housing. That's the letter of the law in the statute that was adopted by, under the middle housing rules under HB, House Bill 2001. So essentially, that accommodates that fact, that footnote accommodates that fact saying, while we expect that to be a detached home, legally, we can't tie that land to only being a detached home. We have to, by law, allow it to be middle housing. So that's really, that's what that footnote is. It may never be used, but it's to ensure that we're meeting the law.
So even though we've put, and I think at our last meeting, we talked about the housing types and the numbers or the percentages that would be in each different housing type, that is a, a council and the Planning Commission should not be concerned if those numbers actually don't pan out that way.
So those numbers are forecasted, right? We have said that no more than 60% of land in a given development can be dedicated to one type of unit, one unit type. But essentially, when it comes to designated land for detached single-family homes, is that is one of the products that you've chosen to build, one of the unit types? It would be considered under state law if you say, okay, this block over here is designated as detached single-family homes. That is, for all intents and purposes, under state law, zoning that for single-family homes. And that's not allowed under state law. So that footnote essentially says, we acknowledge that fact.
Okay.
Even though, you know, developers are going to plan it and I don't see a great probability that a developer is going to bait and switch that. It's like, I'm going to switch those all to quadplexes as soon as I get my approval because they're already planning these different unit types.
So are the sub-districts that are identified on the map, there is a section in here that talks about the ability for developers to cross over that sub-district line, correct?
Yes, there's a couple of circumstances. And that's based on developer feedback where, but we've, I mean, honestly, we got, some developers would prefer that that flexibility be a lot more. So again, a striking of balance. Really what that comes down to is when you have a street that's that border between two sub-districts and you're developing both sides of that street, it allows some flexibility for you to, you know, to kind of make that line a little broad, a little thicker, where you can meet your standard that you'd technically have to meet on this side of the street. You can just flip it to the other side of the street and it substantially still meets the standard as envisioned in the master plan. It just gives that reasonable amount of flexibility. I think that would most come into play where, you know, talking in Frog Pond South, where you have these smaller parcels. Let's say you tie up a three acre parcel on this side of a sub-district line, a five acre parcel on this side. It makes sense that maybe you can do a bit of flexibility on that line as you put together that developer, just for site efficiency and good design.
So we made those sub-district lines up using what criteria? Not by ownership of the property?
Well, in South, they all, in Frog Pond South, they all follow, they consolidate, it's a mix of things. So sometimes it is on ownership. Like for that north-south boundary in Frog Pond East, it's right along the ownership line. Other times, it's geographic features like the, like creeks, like the riparian corridors, particularly in the northern part of East. Other times, it's existing, it's just kind of equalizing them out and putting it alignment with existing or planned framework streets. And other times, it's just to balance out the sizes. So there are a number of factors that we're taking to determine that in the master plan.
Well, it looks like we've got all of our questions. This is, as you said, a tremendous amount of information. I see that our next point on this is going to be in, we'll have our final work session in June and then Planning Commission hearings, July and August. So if any of the councillors and Councillor Dunwell is not able to be here tonight, have further, you know, take more time to study this or come in and talk with you and give you further questions or further comments, I'm assuming it's just going to be clarification of what we have here. But I want to encourage people to go ahead and do that and take their time for individual meetings with staff if you want to. And, you know, if something is determined that really needs to be talked about further after we hear from Councillor Dunwell, for example, how would we incorporate that?
So we're working on the next version, which incorporates some additional staff feedback, other feedback, as well as Planning Commission feedback and any. And so we'll publish that in early June.
Okay.
And that will be, so I'd imagine the next work session, if there's any other questions come up and also we'll give you kind of the highlights of any, kind of the biggest changes since this version.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it looks like we've, have we given you enough for tonight?
Yeah, that's great.
That covers our work session. And so we'll adjourn the work session and reconvene for our regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM.